July 11, 2024. Would you like to do the roll or would you like?
Yes, let's do roll. Okay, Mike Kabate.
Here.
Jim Bauer is not here today. Chang Griggs is not here today. Chris Hoy.
Here.
Jan Colley.
Here.
Jeremy Miller.
Here.
Michael Slater.
Here.
Your quorum. So. Bring the game.
Are you going to put the agenda on the screen? Or I can pull it up?
I can share real quick. It's our first agency is. DPSST.
Great.
So. That's Michael, you can just take it away.
Sure. Hello, my name is Mike Anderson. I am the Facilities Manager for the Department of Public Safety Standards and Training, also known as DPST. I'm here to talk about our policy option package going forward for our campus expansion. And our campus here in Salem. Just kind of go quickly again, my mission statement is pursuing excellence in training and accountability for public safety professionals. Guided by our two principles of safety and quality. Just for an overview of the agency, DPST trains and certifies police officers, firefighters, local corrections officers, not DOC, parole probation officers, telecommunications and emergency medical dispatch. We also certify private security professionals. And we do their licensing. There's also a polygraph examiner group, very small, but they work on it. And then we do some training for OLCC on their enforcement section. So again, DPST was built in 2005, all as one campus, so all of our buildings are the same age. We were built on a. A standard of a 40 person class size. And we typically run. Four concurrent basic police, that is our biggest group. They're there for 16 weeks. And then we'll have like a local corrections that also will have 40 and then maybe a telecom that's 20. Or own OLCC or leadership class. So we were designed to do that and to have a certain turnover rate of about 10% of all public safety professionals in the state. What we found in the last year or two and some of you have seen in the news, we got hit really hard with a. A rush of enrollment on the academy. For a while, police agencies were not allowed, were not successful in hiring. We've always been tracking vacancies, but vacancies don't always mean enrollment in the campus. And so our statutory requirement is that once a public safety professional is hired with an agency, they have 90 days, we have 90 days to get them in the academy. At one point last year, we were hitting almost seven months, which is not good for our public safety. Agencies out there, they really need people on the streets and through. So the legislature allowed us to run a pilot where we increased our class size to 60. We ran three concurrent 60s. We also ran a OSP run OSP Portland class. And we doubled our capacity at the academy for about six months. As you can imagine, this made me very nervous because I'm in charge of all the infrastructure. And we did really stress out the campus, specifically our dorm. And our training menus, which again were built kind of that old model of population and going. So what we're seeking right now is. To expand the campus and this will be in three different areas. And so the, the, here's a little map of the campus. It's located out on Onzeville Highway over by several of the prisons and Corbin University. It's 216 acres. We have 330,000 square feet of building space. Most of it, if you can think about it as inner training or we have a, you know, a shooting range, a lead free shooting range. So a lot of that you can see in there, we have a mile and a half operations course for driving. And what we're proposing is expansion of three areas, a third wing to our dorm. A new training covered clear span training building to operate more training capacity. And then our facility shop and offices, when we were first built, they weren't really thought of. We took over a building that was actually supposed to be a training venue or a garage for our EVAB course. It's okay, it's been working and I'll get into that a little bit, but we're looking to also. Re, redesign how our facilities works on the campus. So you can see the estimated cost. We did, we worked with a engineer, Edinburgh Eddie. Sorry, I can't say their name real. To do a feasibility study and then some cost estimating. So our cost estimate, as you can see, is over $120 million for the entire project, including some parking. So our dormitory wing concept would be a third floor, our third wing to already two wings. It would add, you know, you can see 53,000 square feet, almost 54,000 square feet, which would be a 39% increase of our current building. Not all of this building would be dorm space. We, we have several areas that I talked about that we are lacking. One is some extra capacity for sleeping in students, but also we, like I said, we're built for 40 person classes. We do not have very many classes that can fit 60 people, which is what we need to. Float up to to handle the demand at times and then come back. So the first floor of the campus or the building would be actually classroom space and larger classrooms. The site we're proposing was already identified on our master plan when we were built, 2005, as that additional place to put the. The dorm expansion, so it's already been kind of predetermined to go in that space within our campus. Here's kind of just some general ideas of our feasibility study, what we would look at. So again, the first floor would have three 60 person classrooms. It would have a hundred person class slash auditorium, so we could do more large. You know, maybe a smaller graduation, which we have quite a lot, or we often have partner agencies who want to come and do training on campus. To meet their needs also. Some breakout classrooms for some small instruction. And then there are some areas in the existing dorms where we can't, we would like to improve, which includes like a shower and a locker room for commuter students. We do allow for students to commute to save on not needing a dorm space. The problem with that is they still need a place to change in between going from the defensive tactics building to the classroom and back. We don't have that space currently, so we give them a dorm room, even though they probably never sleep in it. So we're trying to maximize some of that commuter ability too. And then there'd be like a student lounge and area. And then the second and third floors, we would add, you know, 80 total rooms for a 30% increase in our room count. With some study nooks, the layouts of these. And you can see them kind of in the lower corner, lower left corner, they're the same layout as our current one, where we have four beds, two, a quad, and they all share one bathroom. We are looking at doing some mass timber construction on this wing, kind of looking at. Modernizing our current campus and following some important trends. And then you can see on the upper two pictures, we're really trying to bring the current campus, it's very brick oriented. Back in the time, we're trying to honor what it is, but also kind of modernize it so you can kind of definitely see. A, the older part of campus, but integrated well, so it doesn't, not completely clash with what we would like to do forward. The training building, so on campus, pretty much half of our campus is a training village. This is where we teach. Scenario based tactics. So what they learn in the class, we, we have gone away from. Classroom, you know, death by PowerPoint for the first four weeks of the academy, we've completely redone the curriculum. So now it's based on they will be in the classroom for two to four hours. Then they'll go to the venues, to the shooting range, to the DT room and reinforce those models they learned in the class. But in a scenario based lot, you know, scenario that can actually kind of cement those trainings in place. Currently in our village, again, what we found when we, we had these large class loads is we have all these different classes competing for the same resources. So we just need a little more flexibility with some training venues. So what we came to is this large clear span building, most likely it'll be like a Butler Building. It'll have a large 100 by 300 foot. Concrete floor where we could bring in vehicles if we needed to do vehicle stops, stationary vehicle stops, worked on some of those. Or we could take them out and put in some modular wall structures that we currently use in our defensive tactics. They're kind of air, they're inflated air walls that we've really been excited with. And then there's also some ability, we have a Milo virtual shooting system that we could bring out and put it in there. It would just give us a much more. Flexible training space that is protected by the weather, both in winter and in summer than we currently have right now. We could do low light shooting because you know, we'd be able to control the lighting. And it would just continue to make sure that we are training in a safe and controlled way. So making sure that our, our students are learning what they're supposed to be and not worrying about some of the outside. Influences that sometimes we do out in the, out in the village outside. It also would have some briefing rooms so that we could. You know, do a scenario, bring in the students in a nice area, get them off the floor, go over. You know, what they did, how they did, reinforce some more models that we wanted to know. And then we do shoot simulation weapons, so we've integrated an armory for that, so we can safely. Account for that because everything in that village is, is in no weapon zone, other than the simulation rounds that we do for safety reasons. And again, it would have walkers and restrooms. And that would be in our area. This is kind of an idea of, you know, what we could do. We also look to make sure our fire group was not left out of this. There's a lot of different evolutions that our fire group could use this building for, building searches, hose lays, different stuff like that. So we want to make sure this is available to all disciplines within the village. And can be used over and over and is not just going to sit idle. This building will really go. Another great thing about this building is currently we have a building smaller than this, but it's a tilted up concrete building that we have. A fake bank and some other things. We currently have a structural issue with that building that I'm working through. So having only one of those buildings available for us really hurts any future modernization or. Fixes that we need on campus because we just don't have the capacity. It's always running, it's always full, so this will add to our resiliency to train even while we're dealing with an issue that pops up. And then the final concept is, like I said, the facility is a shop office area. Currently, like I said, our current shop and office are down in our controlled village. It's not ideal, it's never been ideal. We have a lot of safety precautions in place to make sure that the facilities actions don't affect the training actions. But it, it's not the most conducive to both training and to the work that the facilities group does. So to use the, the area we have on campus best we can, we situated it off our main loading dock so that we could use that great asset for deliveries and getting things in the building. And then it would be more centrally located to the bulk of the major buildings on campus, which are outside of the village. It would also include an office area for that group so that, again, they could be around campus. Be a little less dependent on vehicles to get to certain areas they need to work on. This would include, as you can see, carpet shop, weld shop, autodidends, maintenance, storage, break rooms. Another big thing that we don't have on campus, because the facility shop is in a secured area, not everyone on campus has the ability to get to facilities to ask questions, to get answers. To interact with the facilities team. That would change, that would be more readily available. We would move some other processes that currently are in other parts of the campus where they should be in facilities to help kind of the flow of campus. These are just again, some concepts on the facility shop. We're also looking at mass timber construction, really looking at. Working with our architects on bringing that natural light in, trying to get up on more energy awareness, especially with House Bill 3409 coming. Really trying to just maximize as much energy savings and modern design and sustainability practices as we can. And then this kind of is our review, so the product timeline, again, we're, we have a policy option package going forward. We did have a pre-application meeting with the city in May. We wanted us to make sure that our design made sense with the city and we're aware of any major changes that they would have seen. That meeting went really well, city did not have any major concerns with what our design was or any new codes that we were going to do. You know, we do have a wetlands on campus that we designed when the original build was and. That all meets where we are because none of the areas we're building on, they're all pre-deserved to have construction on them before. And in the original design. And then if approved and we go through, DPST will partner with DAS procurement and the. And project management for this project. We're a pretty small group at DPST. It just makes sense, DAS is willing to help us with this and, and they have the project management expertise. So we would definitely, we enjoy our partnership with them to make sure this project's successful, if it's approved. And then going through all the procurement and everything, we're, we're expecting, again, if we get this approved. Much the work wouldn't start until the summer of 2026. And then there's just a, a list of the group of architects and engineers that we worked with on this project. Headed by Henneberg Eddies, they're a movie on it. So with that, you have any questions?
Thank you. Other questions?
Well, I have some questions if no one else does.
I think Mike is up first and then we'll get to you, Michael.
All right, I guess I'd be interested in hearing about.
First and then we'll get to you, Michael.
Gotcha.
Oh, you're on mute, Mike.
Yeah, we've got too many mics, Mike, Michael and Michael making a presentation, so. Mr. Mr. Anderson, Mike Kabate, I apologize, I've never been on the campus. I've been in the neighborhood, but I've never been on the campus. So could you tell me again, what is the size of the total campus?
So the total size of the campus is 217 acres.
Okay. And is there, do you have a landscape master plan or is there a chapter in your overall? Site master plan that addresses landscape and management and change of it over time?
Yes, so we both have it, we have a landscape crew on, on, on campus and we work with them on our. Current stuff. We also did work with this feasibility group to have landscape integrated into the plan. Like we, I forget who we use, NOC Studio.
Not, yeah.
Not was, was enlisted to help us with this. But yeah, and then we also did talk to the city and we know the requirements for, because this does involve more parking. Parking is a big thing for the agency. Unfortunately, it just is, we, we extended the parking lot three or four years back. And we just, we have more need, we have large graduations that will bring. You know, foreign people to campus on top of what we already have. And so talking with that city in that pre-application meeting, we do know the requirements for make sure we have good tree coverage or solar. Coverage to make sure we're in step with what the city would, would require of us on that.
Okay, great. I, I think, you know, not, again, not having been there, I did look up the campus on Google Earth just to get a sense of it. And I'd have to say it looks pretty sparse from a landscape perspective. And some of the images that you showed of the dormitory buildings. And you, you talked about energy conservation and I just wondered if. You were achieving the, the tree canopy coverage that both the city requires, but also would be just good best practice. And especially building dormitories, I'm assuming you've got some exterior spaces that breakout spaces, courtyards and things that folks can. Access the outside in a, in a pleasant way.
Yeah, I agree, and, and I will say, we, we are working back. We did have some, some disease, take out some trees and the ice storm several years back. And so we're slowly replanting some trees that were damaged or we had to take out due to disease. There is some unfortunate when we're built, most all the trees are the same trees and ash, so they are susceptible if we have some of that. And our soil wasn't always the best, you know, that we looked into it. We actually worked with the urban forester out of, the forestry division to kind of give some tips on how we can better. Maintain our tree health on campus. And so we are slowly trying to make sure that canopy gets reestablished and we still know we have some work to do on that.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Because we have urban foresters as well, who might be a resource for you. Because we, we just got a million dollars from the federal government for tree canopy. So there may be some opportunities there.
Yeah, that's great.
Michael, Slater.
Yeah, well, Mike asked most of my questions, so that was really good information to hear. But what percentage do you expect when this project is over? What percentage of your 270 acres do you expect to be covered by hard surfaces?
The, the actual percentage being covered by hard surfaces, I don't have the exact percentage on, on hand right now, but I can definitely get that to you, work that out. We have a lot of areas that won't be developed. We have a lot of hillside that isn't conducive to being built on. We actually, the, the land is still owned by DOC. We are working with to do a land transfer with that. Part of that included a. An oak savanna that is protected and we will not be doing anything, that's the upper. Part of that's going back to DOC when the land transfer works on. But we also have the, we have a pond area, we have, again, like I said, we have a full wetlands mitigation. System that goes through four different wetland systems and then a settling pond before it goes onto the highway. And those areas, you know, right now, that's kind of where our track is and I don't see much more. Hard surfaces incorporating that outside of these three buildings currently. There is the parking lot and we do know the parking lot, you know, is, it's a necessary for us, you know, with who we serve. You know, we have a lot of public safety professionals who had to possibly leave at any time to go do that. So it doesn't really work the carpool very much for us, so. We do understand that and we'll try to, we will, we will work on the, on the design to minimize as much as we can.
And then do you have any plans for solar battery storage, anything in terms of energy production in your facility?
So on this design, we, we were pretty early because it's feasibility study. We did make sure that is on the scope for if we go forward and making sure whether it's on the, the roofs itself. Or if it's like in the parking lots per se. On the, on the facility side, if I'm going to say facility side, I am working with the Energy Trust of Oregon to publish some feasibility studies to put up a couple of our buildings on solar and battery. For both the energy reduction and sustainability, but also for some emergency management kind of backup, so.
Just finished a building out, not off a mission, our public works building, it's, it's a couple of points. It's used mass timber, it's a beautiful building, you should maybe check it out to kind of inspiration ideas. But also out there, we have, we have a solar installation and battery storage and we actually have a microgrid now for that entire neighborhood. So for, I think for resiliency sakes, we got a lot of, we got a PGE grant, some other things to help with that, so it might be some things to look into.
Yeah, we'd love to talk to you. We, we've been in talks with PG for years about a microgrant on the campus and it just hasn't ever meshed together.
Seems like between you and the sheriff's office right next door, that would be a perfect opportunity. I need to be a jail commander there and so it's, I still can't believe that we're talking about expanding that place, seems like it was just built yesterday.
Yeah, it does seem that way.
All I am. I was the jail commander when it was built, so. Also, just so you know, we just approved a very large apartment complex just down the street from you, Justin Street. So there's going to be some street improvements going on down there. We're hoping that the transit service is going to be improved. It's a 100% affordable project. So we're hoping to improve the transit. Also, that area is slated for our next fire station. And so we're looking to, we don't have money to operate it currently, but we do have bond money to build it, to purchase. And so that's going to, we're looking out in the Mill Creek area, just so you know. So you can expect any asylum fire station out there.
All right.
In the next few years.
Unfortunately, I call on you guys every once in a while.
Yeah. And your response times out there are really challenging because the closest station is, was one in Battle Creek and then went up on State Street off of Lake. With all of the construction going on out there, it's a real challenge for us, so that's true. Are there other, Jan, do you have any questions?
No.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mike or Michael?
I've been.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you. Daniel, do we need to do anything?
How do you want to proceed in terms of our. Recommendations to CPAP? Do you want to do that after he's presented or on all one at the end?
With your pleasure. Group. We want to make one big recommendation at the end or do we want to be just one at the time?
What, what exactly are we recommending at this point?
Well, this is a kind of proposal that's going to go before the Capitol Project Pfizer Org that is seeking funds. So they, they have a fair amount of sort of conceptual planning done and this has been kind of in the works for a long time. So. This review is about, does it have enough? Is it sufficient enough for moving forward for the budgeting process where with the expectation that. There would be a more detailed review potentially of a landscaping plan, some design elements, maybe the solar links to come as the project gets designed. So that's, that's the basis of these recommendations. That we have today is, is sufficient enough information for. It to move forward in process.
Yeah, the way I look at it is, are we satisfied that they've done enough work that it's our kind of vision to, to start the process?
Correct, it's not a, you know, a spec building in a place that isn't, this is an existing campus that has a plan to it, an area plan. But this has already been a planned building, it's matching, so there's really not a lot of policies where. Is that actually kind of pertain to where they're at with this, so it's. It's a, really it's a matter of them getting their funding and then they have the opportunity to design the, the building more extensively.
I think it would be more straightforward if we just did these individually, so then in case, because we don't know what, we don't know what the next two presentations are going to have for us, so. Probably just be easier to go more at the time.
Okay, that's, that works for me.
So doing a motion then.
Yeah, we had a motion to recommend. Project to move forward to CPAP.
That motion. You're going to make the motion? I can make the motion.
All right, I'll wait for a second.
Sorry.
Great, so we have a motion in a second.
We have a hand up on the screen.
Mike, yes, question?
I'll, I'll wait for discussion after.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to recommend that this move forward. And so now we're not, we're discussion, go ahead, Mike.
Well, I, I think what I, what I heard and I could be mistaken is that there's a realization that the campus has some landscape issues, some tree canopy issues, some soils issues that are broader than just this. Particular project, even though the project has three components to it. And so I don't know if this would be out of order, but whenever there's an opportunity to bring something back up to a standard. It seems like you capitalize on that. And so one, one of the thoughts I would have is. is maybe a recommendation that, given some changes in the landscape that has happened since construction, that the the overall landscape master plan be updated, and this project be a component of bringing the overall site back up to standard or up to a standard that that the department is feels is is good. So I again, I don't know if, you know, that is too broad, because, you know, we're looking at one specific project. But is there a way of crafting a recommendation that helps improve the overall campus as a part of this specific project?
Thank you. I I was I wanted me to follow up on that with a question. Did at your pre-op conference with the city staff, did they talk about tree canopy and so can you share some of those details with us?
Yeah. So, you know, the the when we got to that point, they really just wanted to make sure that this new plan integrated the new standards that keep the tree canopies that the city would want to see, which our architects had in that plan and and we're going to go and 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 had comments back to us, just making sure we're addressing those. And that was pretty much the extent of it. I just wanted to make sure. The other talk was about pedestrian right away out of the campus to the main highway there. But yeah, when it came to the tree, it was really just centered around the parking, the new parking lot concept. It really didn't talk about the existing campus as as it says now. It was about the new parking lot placements and making sure that we had good tree canopy coverage for the standards.
Can I just follow up a little bit? So we're talking about a project level review. But by and large, the landscaping pertains to the area plan that that campus is a part of, and that area plan is due for being updated significantly. I think a recommendation might be it's kind of a little bit difficult to apply, like a campus-wide expectation for a project that is only a part of the campus.
Right.
If it meets the design and landscaping requirements for the city, it essentially complies. So I think what you're asking for is what is the health of the landscaping and stewardship of the landscaping on the campus in general? I think we have to think about, do you have a tree inventory? Do you have a a landscaping plan? And is that something that you can kind of think about as you're because it's not discreetly related to the project herself, but they are linked together in terms of a shared sort of outcome in terms of the use of landscaping for environmental purposes and whatnot. So I don't know where you're at in terms of having a landscaping plan and inventory or whatever, but I think that that's something that would get scrutinized in relationship to a plan update as well as, you know, when we have a little bit further information in terms of the design of the project, and they can, the architects can actually place trees and there's landscaping plan for that specific project. So does that even make sense?
Yeah. Sure. And if I can, you know, knowing how long this process will take, you know, once we if we get approval, I I definitely think it's timed in between that and the design and construction phase. Because we won't want to plant something where we're going to have to take it out later because of the project. So it's a great time for the agency to reexamine how we are doing our landscape plan, revise it, you know, work with the experts in the city to make sure that we're in line with what they want to do. And then work towards that, knowing certain areas we won't want to do anything because that's a future project site. So I I'm but the agency is definitely willing and wanting to do that work to make sure that we're we're meeting the the design of, you know, the the landscape.
Quick comment.
Hold on one second, Michael. We have a comment in the room.
But also for Michael. So today we're approving the cost to go forward to CPAP to go to legislation approval for funding, yay or nay? But the expectation is that he would come back with a refined landscape plan for us to evaluate and understand, as well as more architectural drawings.
Yeah.
So I just don't know if that's clear for for Mike.
Yeah. Michael Slater.
Does the department or the state have overall guidelines for their expectations around landscape in state buildings? I mean, landscapes can have a number of different possible purposes. Right? We often think of them as aesthetic. I think we're kind of moving past that to recognizing kind of ecological services and and public benefits out of landscape. So does this, do we have any criteria that we're looking at to say this is moving in the right direction, the wrong direction? I mean, 100, 217 acres is a pretty large parcel.
Right. I think that's the I think that that's the issue is that yes, the DPSST campus is certainly a huge asset that I think could see see a lot of improvement in that area, but we're today's work is about a project. So I think we kind of I think your questions and comments, Michael, are would be maybe better placed at the area plan review. Is that?
Well, I think that the landscaping component is a little bit easier discussion when you have something to look at and compare to.
Right.
Right now, this is sort of the conceptual stage where we don't have what their landscaping plan is to look, you know, looks like. And so we're using sort of the general landscaping of the entire site as kind of something we're judging in relationship to a project. So I think that my recommendation, even though I'm just, you know, nobody here, is to let's make a note in the in the recommendation that for the project that follow-up presentations should address landscaping or clarify landscaping plans and their relation relationship to what is stated in the area plan with the idea that that area plan will eventually be updated to incorporate all new mandates and also landscaping for energy reduction, which is part of the language that we're going to have to get used to strategic plantings there. So that's that's where we're at with that.
Okay, Michael Bate.
Thanks. Daniel, I think I heard you say that the area plan is due to be updated. That might have been Michael Anderson. Does anybody know what what the timeline on that is?
Well, it's same as every other area plan is we're developing the criteria and vehicles for how that will be done in contracting and what the outputs would be. We need to have so that's sort of next on our work list that had developed schedule and the criteria. This plan was adopted last 2008. So it is updated. Remember, we we created a periodic update schedule of six years. And so but we have to define what the criteria should be to engage people to do the work. So.
And Daniel, are you saying the Capital Planning Commission needs to develop that those criteria? For
They are advisory to the the will be a stakeholder in the development of those policies, but ultimately, the commission is charged with adopting the plans that become for agencies to use.
Then maybe then maybe a a kind of a a motion could be made that that the project move forward. And and that there's a recommendation that the area plan be updated in, let's just say, a reasonable amount of time, 24 months or something, so that it is it is updated by the time that the this construction project moves forward. So so the things that others have said, trees don't get planted in the wrong place. Adequate trees are planted in the right place. Would that be an appropriate recommendation that goes along with the approval?
Daniel, my hesitancy with the 24 months is this was the group that we made the proposal that DAS would potentially do a capital area plan that this group would work together collaboratively to build the criteria for set area plans. And I don't know if we'll be able to go through that exercise enough to tell.
Mike, I'm glad you're saying that and I'm meaning it's like once, but 24 months is not a lot of time for us to actually everything set up. So I think
Yeah.
I think that
A reasonable amount of time, whatever that is.
Yeah, the proposal is is within bounds. I think that creating a timed thing is probably tricky for us to actually make happen.
Okay.
Is that satisfactory?
Can I make a comment? I I I would like us to be careful. We keep those two areas separate. There's the task at hand immediately. They came to us, they want to build three buildings. That's what we're talking about. That's one process that we do as a commission. The other process is that we develop an area plan that's independent of what they have sent it to us right now. And so I'd be a little hesitant to kind of get motions mixed up and put the recommendation concerning an area plan into our recommended approval for them to go ahead at this point. So I think we we can trust the process that the area plan will come before us, because we will put it before us ourselves. And we should trust that we will capture those concerns at that point, whether that's in three months or in six months or next year. It's just clear that way, I think.
Yeah, that would be the optimal way for us to proceed, I think. Is that
It's just there for the discussion. So we have a motion on the table to recommend this. All those in favor, say hi. Oh, I'm sorry, what?
That's okay. I guess if if Mike is making a motion, I guess would is it, are you making a motion or just a suggestion?
We already we already had a motion. He could make a
I didn't make an emotion.
Pardon?
I made a motion and Mike suggested a recommendation with the motion. And that's the part where I would hesitate to include that, even though I agree with the the spirit behind it 100%. I just love to keep the two separate. I think it's cleaner.
So currently, that suggestion is not inert. Doesn't mean it can't become part of it, but it's currently not.
Okay.
Is it reasonable to say
I I'm in support. I I would just I'm in I'm in support of Mike's suggestion, if that has any significance in our conversation.
Thank you.
What were you going to say, Daniel?
If it's sufficient, if we just alluded to the fact that the commission expects more detailed landscaping plan on subsequent review in the future and kind of leave it at that. That we're
And not tie it to the area plan review.
Well, I think it's it's because right now, in terms of compliance, they comply with their area plan. We're talking about we're holding a project sort of we're evaluating a project based on a some standards that aren't incorporated and adopted into their existing plan that are aspirational and may need to be figured out, but they're not really out of compliance with that.
Right. So Mike and Michael, would that meet your need if we included language that with an expectation that they in subsequent reviews, they they address the landscaping concerns?
That that would be fine with me.
Yeah, I I I'm okay with that. I I want, yeah, we want more detail about the landscape for this specific project. But if but let me just say that if we don't make any reference to the area plan, and I understand wanting to keep those separate. And it never comes back to us, right? How, what is the mechanism that someone will say, well, yeah, it's required to come back to us. So if it's a question, 24 months is the wrong timeline, I'm I'm not married to that at all. I I think a reasonable amount of time is something, especially if it's dependent on us doing some work ahead of time. I just, I don't know what the venue is to raise the flag to say, look, we think that it may not even be in compliance with the current area plan, with trees that have been lost and things that have happened over time. So how do we footnote this as something that should be done in the future, the next time they come back, is to give us an update on where they stand with it with an update on the area plan? So maybe that's a way of linking it. Maybe the way of linking it is come back to us with more details on the landscape component of these of of this particular project and explain how it relates to the overall campus area plan. Would is that is that a subtle?
Yeah, hold on. So we have some hands up in the room. So Daniel, I think for for Mike and Michael, this is just my thought for the group, is once we build a criteria for an area plan, we establish the cadence of that area plan, and we actually support that schedule, because part of the 24-month issue is that DPSST, we don't know what funding they're required to request to be able to update their plan. So really, our job after after our our this season of budget building is to build the criteria so that we can build the schedule when area plans are due, and we can actually put a value to those studies so that agencies have an opportunity to request the funding and then do the work. And then we put that on a cycle.
I mean, that that was the that was our strategy for doing this. And I think it's kind of the realistic strategy, given how we state government works and the cadence of requests and responses. So I I think that all this is a good point. I just want to focus on what the task is today, but I think that Mike, what your comment is, is going to be a part of the record and the memo that I generate as part of the project that follows the project. So where it gets raised and sort of substantiated is within the the project record. And so, yeah, they will need to come back to CPC when they have more accurate design drawings. I would just
I can live with that. I can live with that.
Okay. So we still have the original motion on the table. So all those in favor, say hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi.
As opposed, they nay?
Hi.
You know, Michael Slater, are you opposed or?
Oh, I'm an I. I I I have to. Don't leave me out.
I just wanted to clarify because we have a little bit of a lag with your connection. And so you voted yes, and then it sounded like you voted no. So I just wanted to make sure.
My apologies.
No, it's no, it's technology. It's no worries. So motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We look forward to hearing the further updates.
All right, now we are on to our Department of Forestry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody care for a handout? My we have these actually, I think, a few years ago, so.
Sure. You brought them, might as well might as well look at them.
This is different from the PDF we sent?
Just wanted to speak additional supplemental. Yes.
Okay.
They go recycle bin, so
Yeah.
It provides some interest.
Thank you.
Interesting reading the trailer. You all ready? Yes, go ahead. Good afternoon, Chair. Sorry about that. I thought that would keep my camera. Sorry about that. So all right, good afternoon, Chair Hoy. Members of the commission, for the record, my name is Jeff McGowan. I'm ODF's interim facilities capital management program manager interim. And I'd also like to introduce Maya Foti of Architectural Resources Group. She's our consultant on the on the project since 2013. She's online virtually. There she is. And then also my boss, Justin Hallett, ODF Admin Division Chief. He's he's here for my moral support. So I'd also like to thank Daniel for for his help along the way in our project development. And the the scope of this presentation is to highlight our department's 2025-27 policy option package for this project, for the funding to restore our departments and the city's beloved state foresters office building. And and also the the building situated in the in the airport road area plan. And it's a historic building. So basically, the restoration is to keep the exterior. And it's a historic building, so basically the restoration is to keep the exterior and the interior of the the facility close to what it was originally. And so there's not going to be any any major changes on the outside. It's going to be, uh, still having a little echo, sorry. And then I'll go over the scope a little bit in detail, since I'm not sure how many members of the committee were here two years ago. So the scope of the project includes replacement renovation of the building's mechanical plumbing and electrical systems, the restoration of the interior and exterior architectural components, along with rehabilitation of adjacent sidewalks, walls and the grand chimney. It's also important to note that the vast majority of our proposed work at the basement level is unrelated to the conversion of office space and is being performed to improve the building's structural integrity for stability, water tightness, accessibility and mechanical and electrical plumbing performance. In detail, it includes masonry, repointing, seismic improvements, re-roofing, window restoration, accessibility improvements, including installation of an elevator, restoration of interior wood woodwork, restroom, copy room and basement restoration and functional improvements, and the the restoration of the old boardroom ceiling, which was damaged during an earlier remodel. Mechanical plumbing electrical scope includes a new hot water boiler and hydraulic piping system, new chilled water cooling system, new ventilation air system, new fire sprinkler system, new plumbing system, upgrade of electrical service and distribution system, upgrade of voice and data system, upgrade of fire alarm system and upgrade of and restoration of interior lighting. Sorry, I didn't share my brief here. This scroll, seems like that the page up and page down should work, but not slice through load. Anyway, this is uh the same presentation as we used two years ago, so there's just a couple added slides. And uh, two years ago, that we got the CPC's recommendation, compliance memo recommending the project proceed and that with the added provision that we also look, take a closer look at a more comprehensive flood hazard analysis and mitigation strategies to add to the scope. We also gained acceptance at the CPAP that year in 2022. Since then, we've also garnered more support from Restore Oregon with their letter of support, a letter from Sarah Monroe, the historic author, and a letter from the American Institute of Architects as well, all attesting to the historical significance of this facility. Other than that, most slides are the same, but I won't read through the slides, a lot of it I've already just described in the verbal description. And the only other really change is we changed the boiler from instead being, it used to be fuel oiled. And then it changed the natural gas line way, and then we were going to change it to biomass, but now we're going to use electric. Keeping with sustainable.
There we go. October 15th.
Uh, first with the last thing, Wheeler, could you mute yourself, please, for hearing me in the room?
Good.
Okay, other than that, the other slide I'll add is the uh addressing more of the flood hazard analysis stuff. All right, here, here we go, it's some basically some pictures historic and some contemporary pictures of the facility. Shows our consultants that have been working on the project. This 2013 Maya Foti, who's online here. So if there's any, uh, I I know more of the generalities of the project, but if you need more in-depth information, she'll she'll provide some more in-depth knowledge of that. Very serious.
Why the project's been going on since 2013? It's a long time.
Yes.
What what led to that, like 11 years?
Uh, it's, by knowledge, never made it all the way through the funding approval process. There's time has gone on, the the maintenance needs are increasing, so it's becoming more expensive to maintain it. And so this restoration would uh do many things, including uh, add in for sustainability and strategic energy management to make it cheaper to operate and maintain in the future.
Clarify a little bit, because several members of the commission have been here that we did some turnover. The State Forest Office Building, uh, it's almost like a a biennial project request for the Department of Forestry. They've done a lot of work. They've got a lot of due diligence on it. It's highly supported, but it just cannot make it through the the funding process. And so they are here simply to uh, again, get your uh recommendations in and forward, but nothing is really substantially changed. This is more of like a a process related thing, but um, so it's just the support of that project to move to CPAP. But it it has been extensively reviewed in the past and um, so that's kind of what we're we're doing today, is just acknowledging that it still complies. Okay. And it's still uh fits within our plans and should move forward. Is that? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it's up by feedback drops, that that'll help. Right, and then we move on to some other slides. So this is just showing the location, we're located at 2600 State Street. Part of our campus, the main campus straddles across Mill Creek, and then we're across from the penitentiary. And then on the, uh, just got the arrow to kind of flip flops where State Street's shown at the top, but then at the bottom of the larger picture. And then of note also to the to the right of Building B is Building A, that's also a historic facility. Used to be on the other side of Mill Creek near Building D, and we actually relocated that back in 2004 over to that site, and that's now our museum on site. This is the, just the history of the building, constructed 86 years ago, designed by Lynne Forrest, a the US Forest Service architect. He's also uh, did the, was involved with the design of the historic Timberline Lodge. Of note, this is basically the ranked second highest in expression of the national park style in Oregon for facility. It's constructed under the WPA, the Works Progress Administration, is listed on the National Historic Place of Historic Places. This is a description of more detail of what the the exterior work that would be done.
This is a listing also of just a character defining features of the building that would be, you know, retained as part of the project.
Thank you, Maya. There's uh some description of the interior work and of note, a lot of the Oregon wood finishes.
And every room, I'd just add, has a different wood species that was donated by a a different logging company, and it has a little a little plaque that explains the company and what the the wood is. So if people haven't gone through there, it's absolutely worth a visit.
There's uh some pictures of the grounds or historic pictures, along with the description of what we'll be working on there.
Uh, again, just to add, you know, that's also something worth visiting. If you walk around, there's little pieces of hand carved stove with little shapes of trees and hearts. If you look really carefully, there's little messages embedded in the stone, which is another really cool feature.
Shows the the perspective of the boundaries of the project scope, so not just the building, but the, as I said, the the walkways, the walls and the some of the perimeter. And I know, by the way, on the landscape, uh, you'd be looking. We're not really changing much of the shrubbery or that type of stuff, other than over time, we we were trying to keep in base or the native low maintenance type species. Of plants and shrubs.
And just to add, I'm so sorry. No, I was going to say, you know, MIG did sort of a a cultural landscape report, so they did, yeah. So the the National Register boundary goes, I think, all the way to State Street and to the river. So it's a large, much larger site, and so they did an analysis of the original configuration of the site, the original plantings, which weren't very much, but definitely that and the rock walls are all character defining features that we would obviously want to restore and retain. Yeah. And the flagstone, yeah, it's all the original flagstone paving, you know, but over the years, of course, they've buckled because of roots, and so that's also part of the work is to remove them, salvage them, you know, get ADA compliance and then reset them. It's another really important part of the project.
It's a show of series slides with pictures historic and like vertical or contemporary. Picture of the site at the time. It's the view from across the creek.
Is the creek channel, is the creek channelized there?
I can't speak to the whole creek, but there are, there are some, uh, I know where we've got the bridges and stuff, there's, there's some existing riprap or whatever type of architectural stone. Maya, you might know more on that than I.
Are you, are you asking if this was a natural river and then, you know, it was, or was it? I'm not sure what the question is, or was it sort of an artificial, you know, rerouting of water? It's it's, if you look at the actual, if you see those walls, you could see that's all, it's overgrown now, but it's all stone, so it was all sort of um bordered with stone, so I'm guessing it must have been sort of constructed, probably there, and then they reconstructed it to sort of manage the river and sort of define an edge to that stream relative to the building. Uh, it's hard to see the stone, but they're all like.
Um, sorry. Restoring the natural edge?
Um, we, so again, this, um, we had, um, we started this project in 2013. In 2014, the scope didn't really address the river so mu, or the stream. Um, I think we had some scope in there to remove vegetation that was growing over the hand laid stone, just to clean it up a little bit and some minor repairs. But our cost estimate didn't include sort of substantive restoration of that edge, I think just because of cost, and it was sort of like, where do you stop? Because that stone goes all the way up to the other buildings. Does that answer your question?
It answers my question, thank you.
Okay.
Photo of the work at times. This picture shows at the time some of the new windows that were installed and some temporary windows. There's transitioning to present day pictures.
Just to add one other thing, you know, obviously, you know, the WPA projects, the intent was to give work to out of war craftspeople. Um, and the other element was there was also extensive furnishings that were part of this building that sort of over the years has, you know, disappeared. But again, part of the story of of this building is also, you know, the opportunities for these craft people to to sort of survive the depression, and this was kind of their a remnant of that. It's unfortunate that the interiors components are not there, and in some cases covered up like the flooring and stuff like that, but I thought that was important to note.
So the, this shows a tarp over our chimney, and I'll talk a little bit more about that or show some more pictures.
Probably about 10 more minutes.
Okay, yes. Showing the accessible walkway. It shows back to the the flood back in 2012, where we, uh, and I'll talk more about flood mitigation. Where we had leak back in 2013 on the chimney, so they they fixed the water leak. Some damage to some nearby trees during the 2021 ice storm. It's showing closer up pictures of the the stone walls. And the sidewalk. This is more on the this frustration scope, basically we're providing a safer, healthier environment for the building's occupants and uh as we renew the infrastructure components and systems, again, improving energy efficiency and and preserving that cultural landmark, historic landmark. More on the the interior scope, and then that's the the ceiling, so history was that you could see more into the ceiling and to the rafters, but that part of that got covered up, so we'll go back and restore that part at the same time. Some exterior scope, including that the chimney, which would probably be taken, it would be taken apart piece by piece and inventoried and then put back the way it's supposed to be, the way back to the same as it is, but but fixed with seismic improvements. Again, the exterior area. On the flood hazard mitigation, so the project itself basically bathtubs the basement, so we're and it's not all just for moisture and water control, but also for seismic and ADA types type work, and so foundation repairs, new basement walls. These slabs aren't great, right now, there's a couple slabs that are offset by about five inches, and then uh, as part of that, removing soil, putting a drainage mat, recompacting everything properly with waterproofing, damp proofing, so that that that'll help with the water tightness of the facility. And then we've, we've had our backup plan where we, we always monitor the weather, we look at the rising level of the water. We have sandbags and materials on hand, we've got an agreement with the Department of Corrections for labor, and then uh you put a sandbag as needed along the, along the perimeter of the of the creek. And then we also add sandbags along the the windows and any window wells that are there well. And then we've got a back backup trash pump in case power goes out and the sump, the building sump doesn't work, we could use the trash pump to de-water also. So funding, we we've looked at single phase option and last, back two years ago, also looked at an estimate to if we had to split up to get funding, then then it costs more to do so at the time. With that, here's just any questions? And if anybody's interested in the tour, we could, I'd be happy to take anybody on a tour.
Any questions?
Would love to do a tour sometime. I know that, I think you offered this, did you staff or maybe leadership a tour recently, and I wasn't able to make it, but I would love to to do that.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? Mike Abate.
Um, thank you. Um, I I was here two years ago when you made this presentation, and I, the only question I have, I think you guys have done a a really terrific job, and thank you for responding to our concerns about flooding issues. It's got to be difficult as an agency to have a resource that is so highly regarded and yet be unable to find funding for it. And I I don't know if there's anything the Capital Planning Commission could do to help advocate or to at least make a a statement that this is an extremely significant building in the state that if the state cannot prioritize funding for it, that is um uh, that is not good for the state's reputation. And um, having to go to the well year after year after year, or biennium after biennium, uh, and and every time you do, the cost goes up by two to four million dollars. So um, from my, from my perspective, I would love for us to enthusiastically support this project and advocate for its funding.
Thank you. Are there other comments or questions? All right, I would, am I turning a motion?
I'd like to make the motion, if I could, that we um enthusiastically support this project and approve it and um and advocate for the funding uh to make this happen uh as soon as possible.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second, buddy on? Is there further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for the presentation. All right, next up.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, next up, we got.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Maya, for joining us. Justin as well.
It is a very cool building. I did get the tour.
It's a very cool view.
I'll probably be okay here, just like the microphone. Okay. Well, thank you for having me, everybody, Chair Lloyd, members of the commission. My name is Scott Nebiker. I'm the Miami Mid-Construction Manager here for DAS, Prize Asset Management, here today to talk about, showing my age, needing to take my glasses on and off, Labor and Industries Building feasibility study. And just in short, DAS has gotten to the point with this project, very early stages, where we've had a feasibility study, a fairly detailed feasibility study prepared for the Labor and Industries Building in support of a project funding request that we're moving forward with for the anticipation of approval for the 25-27 legislative session. Because of that, we do not have, we have not gotten to the detailed design stage yet. There is not fancy renditions or elevations of what a project will look like. That being said, the improvements that we have planned are basically very minimal in terms of exterior view and what the aesthetics to the building would be. Very minor window glazing will be removed, one of the, maybe let's go to that.
Next picture, Amy. You can't see it in the picture, but one of the aesthetic things, some of the glazing is cracking. It's starting to not look very attractive, and so that would be replaced. And landscaping has been talked about. The landscaping improvements would be relatively minor, but as we get into detailed design, would be no less than what is there and very consistent with every other building and in keeping with what's on the Capitol Mall. It's a very high-profile building because of its location. If I could show with my hands of the four quadrants of the Capitol Mall, it's bounded by the library, Public Service Building, ODOT Building, and then Labor and Industries at the address that you see there is on that northwest corner of the Capitol Mall. It's a very technical hand drawing that we showed here. So in these next couple of slides, I'm not going to read all the words that are there. We're just trying to convey that when we consider a major building upgrade, there's a significant number of standards, executive orders, state laws that deal with efficiency, sustainability, et cetera, that come into play. And not only will those modernization standards be taken into account for the project design, it's been a part of the feasibility study process to develop the cost estimates that we have. Next slide, please. Continuation with that, one of the things that, in compliance with those previous slide standards and guidelines, is some specifics of what have been included in the feasibility study. Yes, there is the, at its core, if I could summarize it in few words, it's a complete gut of the interior of the building with replacement of all major building infrastructure things, electrical, HVAC, plumbing, and then doing a seismic upgrade with options given for sustainability and green energy technology improvements throughout the building as well. And that's what you see on the slides. The cost estimate, the funding request that is included in our policy option package is for approximately $150 million. The intent of this slide is just to show you how that funding package is broken down. In short, I would say everything on the right is the construction-focused items, construction-focused items, things such as structural improvements, the building envelope, the services piece. The services piece are things like elevators and all of those building and the structure things that serve, that provide service, is where it gets its name. And then some of the soft costs, including contractor general conditions cost, allowances for escalation, and other soft costs for the rest of the pie chart. One of the things that we asked our hired consultant to do was to provide an allowance for cost escalation, so we can be anticipatory, I guess, in this dynamic environment with construction costs for what impacts would be for delays if they were to unfortunately occur. So the current schedule, we'll get to in a bit, but shows design anticipated to start in the fall of 2025, and with construction much sooner than that. But what happens if we have a disaster and things get delayed? How can we anticipate that, and what would the impacts be? Again, one of the other things that we had the feasibility study look at that we're often asked as well, what are other options that you've looked at? And so we've tried to summarize on this slide. We asked the consultant to look at what a replacement building would be on the Capitol Mall and/or at a greenfield site to, a logical question would be, well, couldn't you just build another building for cheaper? Is it less costly to do X or option B or option C? And so this attempts to answer that questions, and those alternatives are looked at in the feasibility study. If the construction timeline that you see there, I mentioned previously, that that designed 12-month bar, our projection is to start that in the fall of 2025. That would be when funding for a project of everything moves forward, as we hope, would become available. It does give us that interim time to start the necessary contracting, alternative delivery approvals that we need with DOJ and other procurement people to get approval to move forward, and then the timelines for permitting bidding, construction, commissioning are shown accordingly as well. And I guess what I would say about this slide is if you could try to take our feasibility study and boil it down to the main points, that's what we're trying to do here. The current state column tries to identify what some of the main issues that we're trying to address in our, with our project that are looked at in the feasibility study. We've included information about, another question we might commonly get is, well, if we didn't do anything, what is your estimated deferred maintenance cost from now until projected times into the future? So those are listed there. One of the things that we have to do as a state agency is meet Energy Use Index criteria. And currently, the LNI building is one of our main targets for addressing. It's one of the drivers for this project. So information is given there. And then I believe, I'm going to leave that current utilization, other than just calling your attention to it, it's a 210 FTE that currently work in the building. But if we could go to the next slide, I think it's that one, yeah, that talks about in a post-pandemic world, what potential capacity of the building could be. And I should go back, the current composition of the tenants in the building is temporary holding space for DAS executive building, executive employees that are currently misplaced while the executive building work is going on, and then DCBS. But for future use, moving forward, what could it be? And so there's been several scenarios looked at, low density, medium density, high density. That range, if the objective was a one-to-one desk-to-head count ratio, old-school, if you will, projection of 900 FTE-supported staff. Medium density says, what if 30% of those staff had that desk-to-head count ratio of one-to-one? You had two people sharing a desk for half of those people, and 20% of the people were remote enough that four people could share, that capacity bumps up to just shy of 1,900. And then high-density, a three-to-one for every desk, maybe the, everybody is in a hybrid work environment, sharing facilities, what does that look like, 2,700 people? So I would look at those numbers as nothing more than the boundary conditions and what a reasonable estimate of a mid-range is. And the design stage is going to look at programming, usage, and we'll refine those numbers to get to where we need to be. And with that, that is our summary presentation of a preliminary feasibility study. So I'm definitely available for any questions that you may have.
I have just a, maybe it's a little bit off topic of your particular project, but just more of a process question. So we've had your third presentation today, and we've had two individual departments do their own, and now DAS is doing this one. I'm just curious why that is and how that decision is made on whose project it is.
On whose project is getting presented before the committee?
On who's carrying the project. Like, so like Forestry and DPSST did their own, and now your, DAS is doing this building. I'm just curious why is.
Just DAS. I think if I'm understanding your question correctly, it's because this is a DAS-owned building and it's a responsible agency, we would be requesting the funding and seeking the approval.
So if you don't own those other properties.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Easy answer, though.
Thanks. Keep those kind of questions coming.
I just, okay, I didn't realize that. Just to be clear, so Michael presented on DPSST, they own that campus that's theirs, but they're going to contract with DAS, with Scott's team, to do project management services. Interpreters services that we provide, like accounting or everything. There's a whole range of things we do. They can provide that for them to give them the capacity and the support.
So that's a good point of clarification of why that might have been, because that did come up as a possibility.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. Are there other questions?
Thank you, Daniel.
Well, I can tell you that we, that building is subject to, I get a lot of comments about that building. Like, why doesn't the city take over that building and use it for housing? That's the number one comment all the time. I'm not kidding. It's the, it happens all the time. Like, well, you know, it's not our building. It's the state's building. But yeah, so many people look at that building and say, why don't we use that for housing?
Interesting.
Yeah.
Is it because of the perception that it sits largely empty?
Yes, I think so. I think so. Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah. Are there other questions about this project?
All right, well, I would entertain a motion, and oh, now we have a hand, Mike Abate.
Just curious, I'm a little bit familiar with the challenges of the parking garage under the main Capitol Mall. Will this project vertically go down to interface with the parking garage, or is there a kind of a line of demarcation there?
Only as far as necessary to provide the seismic upgrades that would be surrounding the foundation. In and of itself, this project does not improve. It's not intended to address the parking structure per se.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? I would entertain a motion. Or I guess I could do it. I move that we recommend this project moving forward.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Slater.
A motion in a second to support the project moving forward. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time, everybody. Appreciate it.
Do we have any members of the public online that are wanting to make comment? Amy? Great. Anything further, Daniel? It's all the business we have today. We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Your call.